Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will call the November 20th meeting of the Common Council to order. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to determine a quorum.
Alderman person, Chaplaski.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
May.
Here.
Ropes.
Here.
Frankie.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Sangstak.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Barsak.
Here.
Ten present and unexcused.
We have a quorum. Alderman Chaplaski will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in your visible liberty and justice.
We have two items up for public hearing this evening. I'll ask clerk to read item number one.
Hearing on the improvement of South 57th Street from north of West Walker Street to West National Avenue and portions of intersecting streets by concrete reconstruction, new driveway approaches, miscellaneous sidewalk repair, storm sewer, storm sewer relay, sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer relay, water main relay, and building services.
Mr. Daniels?
Thank you. This is the public hearing for South 57th Street. Here are the procedures for tonight's hearing. First, I'll go through the project's scope and cost. Then we'll go through the assessment rates and methods of payment. Then there'll be comments or questions from the Common Council and then from citizens as well. Then the hearing will be closed and the project will be referred to the Board of Public Works and we expect that they will make a final decision tonight. Here are the project limits. South 57th Street from National Avenue on the south to north of Walker Street at the dead end. Here are some pictures of the pavement. The concrete pavement underneath this asphalt was originally put down in 1925 through 1927, so that's 88 years old. That concrete is still there. And then they came through in 1964 and put a three-inch layer of asphalt over the top. So that's about 49 years old. And the pavement has severely deteriorated. It's very expensive to do routine maintenance. We did try seal coating the street in 1998. We did that free of charge to the residents, but we did receive a lot of complaints after the final product that it was too sticky and tracked into people's houses. So that concrete under there from 1925 has virtually completely failed and needs to be replaced. As well as the sewers, sanitary sewers from 1910, and it's leaking and collapsing. These are actual photos from the sewer in 57th Street. This is actually a hole in the side of the sewer and this is just the ground outside of the pipe, so the sewage is going in and out of the pipe. So we would be looking at new storm sewer, the existing sewers from '48 to '66, new sanitary sewer, the existing sewers from 1910 through 1911. There'd be new water main, the existing water mains from 1907 to 1922. And then there would be new street lighting poles, cable, and duct installed as well. Now, 57th Street has had some flooding problems in the past about five years. These stars and dots and shaded lots are some of the people who have complained about sewage flooding in their basements. We've had at least 16 people since 2008, 2009, 2010, and 2011, we had some serious flooding. So we are trying to reroute the sewers in this area. Instead of going south, they're going to go to the north, which will increase the capacity and hopefully cut down on some of the flooding that we've had recently. So included with the project, including with the street paving project, the city will offer the installation of a sump pump as well as a partial replacement of your sanitary lateral at no additional cost to the homeowner. This is valued at $4,000. This work will be paid for through MMSD's private property inflow and infiltration removal program. And this work would be done on a volunteer basis. You can opt out of it if you wish, but it is probable that in the near future, the installation of sump pumps would be required under future rules coming from MMSD. So the project will also include the removal and replacement of deteriorated curb and gutter, pavement, and driveways. Sidewalk will be replaced where needed, not necessarily all of it will be replaced. The carriage walks that go from your sidewalk out to the street would also be replaced in the price. The storm sewer laterals would be installed all the way to your house if you request a sump pump. And street parking, which I know is a problem in that neighborhood, will be provided on neighboring streets and the residents who are affected would be given free parking permits at no charge, so that could be alleviated. This is what the final street will look like, typical finished product, new concrete street, curb and gutter, sidewalk. Here are the costs of the project. The pavement portion of the project is $632,000. The street lighting would be $44,000. Sanitary sewer would be $540,000. Storm sewer would be $195,000. Water main would be $415,000. So the total cost of the project will be $1.8 million for all told. The assessment rates for residences are $50.18 per foot and commercial properties pay a little higher rate, $62.72. If you do have a driveway, you would have to pay an additional $6.26 per square foot for your driveway. Most people actually come off the alley though, so that won't affect too many people. The assessments from all of the residents affected would total $235,000, which represents 37% of this, just this top number. So the residents are not paying the full cost by any measure. Here's a sample special assessment for a typical 40-foot lot. The assessment rate's $50.18 and then the storm sewer lateral is $561. So the cost to a typical house would be $2,568.20. We do have payment options available. There's a lump sum payment if you want to pay it off right away. Otherwise, there's a five-year plan or a 10-year plan that you can go on. If you go on the 10-year plan, there is a 4% interest charge and the first year of your payment would be $360. You probably wouldn't get the bill until 2014. And then the 10th year, you would pay $267. The city has funded projects like this with special assessments for over 100 years. Properties that receive a unique benefit from the project have historically been assessed up to 100% of the cost. In this case, the special assessments are only going to count for 37% of the cost. In West Dallas, our policy has, like I said, has always been that you pay for the street in front of your house. So the people on 60th Street recently paid for their street and while we all use their street, only they pay for their street and you pay for your street. So we use each other's streets, but in the end, everyone only pays for the street in front of their house. And as you can see from this map, this is all the people who've received special assessments in the last 10 years. Almost everyone, at least on the east side of West Dallas, has paid an assessment in the past 10 years for an alley or a street or sidewalk or something. So pretty much everyone is paying their fair share eventually. The city does borrow the funds for the paving portion of this project, so the city will pay interest to these municipal bond holders over 10 years, which is why we then pass along the interest charges, 4%, to the residents that choose the five- or 10-year payment plan. So that is all. If there are any comments or questions from the Common Council or citizens, they will now be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Are there any questions or comments from the council on this item?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Roat.
Mr. Daniels, Pete, are they going to replace the laterals or reline them?
If the residents opt to be in the voluntary program, the sanitary laterals would be relined and most people do not have a storm sewer lateral, so that would be put in new. So there's two different sewers. The sanitary one would be lined, the storm one would be new.
And I guess just to coattail on it, anybody who is in one of these areas, I strongly suggest getting their laterals relined because it's coming where we're going to be required whether we want it or not. And this is a free program. Alderman Lysick and I had it done in our district and got no complaints. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, are there questions or comments from the audience on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number one.
Yeah, right here.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sharon Heisinger, 1116 South 57th Street. I'm one of the persons that's reported a lot of sewage in the basement over the years, so I'm hoping this project will put an end to that. I'm also hoping that I can have my lateral replaced. Do I have to sign up in addition to what I've received for this?
No, no.
Okay. And I heard the word "partial," so what does that mean?
Partial referring to what, the lateral?
I mean, like you only go halfway to my house or?
Well, no, we'll go all the way. Well, the sanitary lateral will be lined the entire length to the house.
Okay.
The storm lateral, if you opt for the sump pump, would go all the way to the house as well, so both would go all the way to the house.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the audience with questions or comments? Again, ask that you state your name and address for the record.
My name is Frank Keanitator. My address for my property is 810-812-SOUTH-57TH. I just see on mine that I just have a storm sewer lateral. Do I have to ask for the other?
For the sump pump?
Yeah. Do I have to ask for that or request that or something?
We will be in contact with you. The sump pumps are going to be installed at the tail end and we can, we will be in contact with you to make sure.
Okay. I just didn't know if there was a question. And I guess my other question was, you say this is replacing the street, right? Is that what you're doing?
Right, completely.
Okay. What's the problem with the street? I guess as I look at it, I don't have that much problem with the street. I guess I'm just kind of curious, what would?
Well, it's cracked into pieces about the size of my hand. I mean, it's starting, those pieces then start to pop out and then the city has to send someone over to fill potholes and it becomes a maintenance hassle to keep sending people over to fill the cracks and fill the potholes.
I mean, I've seen some roads in some places that are really nasty, you know, and I didn't think our roads were that bad, were problems, that I was just curious.
Thank you.
Ernest J. Pagels Jr. I live at 1703 South 115th Court, apartment number six, West Dallas, Wisconsin. The $4,000 that the city is going to pay each housing, house for a sump pump and what happened, I mean, isn't that the owner's, the homeowner's responsibility to buy house insurance to pay for that?
This is a special program that MMSD is paying for. It's not really, it's not coming from the city. They really want to get the rainwater out of the sewer because they historically have had to dump the water.
I mean, for the sump pump and taking sewage out there, what happened to a homeowner's insurance for them to do it themselves?
This is going to help the whole neighborhood because we're going to get a lot of the rainwater into the storm sewer and out of the sanitary sewer. And if there's less rainwater in the sanitary sewer, then it won't back up into your neighbor's basement, hopefully, that's the theory. We need to get some of that water that shouldn't be in the sanitary sewer into the storm sewer and just go right to the river. And because of that, MMSD is willing to pay for that because they think it will, you know, help them as well because they won't have quite as much water to treat when we have a big rainstorm. So it's a big advantage for MMSD.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Ray Manuel Robinson, 5704 West Walker. You said that the sidewalk will be replaced as needed. 56 was done and they did all the sidewalks.
Yeah, we'll probably end up doing about 90% of them with all the laterals.
Killed off a lot of those old trees, so is there some way of avoiding doing that?
A lot of the laterals and water services that were put in in 1907, when, you know, when they came to plant those trees, maybe in the '30s or '40s, they didn't really always know where they were and a lot of times they planted those trees right on top of the laterals, unfortunately. They didn't have Digger's Hotline in 1940 and so they didn't always know. So unfortunately, we'll have to see how it goes. We don't know where the trees are necessarily in relation to the laterals that go to your house. And if they cut too many of the roots, then it becomes a danger that it could blow over. So we have to take each tree one at a time. We'll try and save as many as we can, but yeah, unfortunately, we find that a lot of the trees are growing right on top of the sewer. And if we're going to replace the sewer, which is collapsing, then we have to, we have to take the tree too, so.
And also at my house, I have a tree on my property and if it's near the lateral, is that going to be affected?
Well, we'll have to see. It's possible. Hopefully not, but it's possible. We'll look at each case and see.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Chaplaski.
I'm sorry for being out of order here, but one gentleman reminded me of a question. On the sump pumps, now is that 100% positive that they're going to pay for it?
Yes.
Because, okay, because the last time they were, we didn't know because of the money shortage. And a lot of sidewalks that were broken on 56th Street were done because of the people doing the work. They brought the equipment up on the street. That's why they had it replaced too.
Well, that too, yeah. So we didn't have to pay for all of them, but if the lateral is under the walk, they have to take that walk out, so.
Right, obviously. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Is there anybody else in the audience with questions or comments?
Darrell Pitcher, I live at 5630 West National. I built new construction about six years ago. Never had any sewage backup or rainwater in the basement, never, never any problems at all. This past year, I got forced to pay over $1,000 for a new alley. I had no say in the matter. Now I'm getting forced to pay over $3,300 for the road sewer and laterals, sidewalk that I seem, that seem to me that are fine. I paid a fortune for the new house, pay a fortune in property taxes. I don't know, I just don't see, it just doesn't seem fair to me.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Is there anybody else with questions or comments on this item? Okay, we will now close public hearing number one. I'm sorry, we will now reopen public hearing number one.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Pat Clark, 903 South 57th. I just have one question. I don't have a basement and I'm sure there are other houses that don't. Is MMSD going to, because I don't need the, anything to do with sewage, would they, is there any way that you can contact them, like as me, that I don't need?
Well, sure. It's a voluntary.
Sump pump, can they, like maybe give me some sort of credit?
Well, no. It's only for people who actually get the sump pump.
Okay, it's just.
But it's a voluntary thing. And we did have some on 56th Street that didn't have basements.
Okay, yeah.
It's still possible that you might have a foundation drain. We'll have to look at that.
A foundation what?
A foundation drain where the water around your basement is going into your sanitary sewer, so we'll have to.
So what you mean, are you trying to tell me that there could be problems with, around my foundation? And then what, I'm going to have to do something about that?
Well, you might still benefit from a sump pump.
Oh, really? And then where would they put it?
Well, we'll have to, we look at each house individually.
Oh, okay. All right. And then they would tell me. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else with questions on public hearing number one? Anyone else? Okay, now we will close public hearing number one and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number two.
A hearing on the special use permit for the Chinese Relaxation Center, a proposed massage business to be located within a portion of the Plaza 100 Shopping Center at 2727 South 108th Street.
Mr. Steeble?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the 100 Plaza Shopping Center is proposed massage parlor, health spa. Because it's a cultural, physical culture and health services, it requires a special use in a C4 zoning district, which this property is located in. The proposed would be for 100, or excuse me, for 1,000 square feet and the hours of operation would be 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. There's limited traffic to this particular site because of the use, about 60 parking stalls are required in the entire strip mall there. Three of those stalls will be required because of this use and 55 are currently provided on-site. They anticipate about eight customers a day. We've had a massage parlor in this location before and because of illegal uses, the special use was revoked. This operator that is proposed to go in there has had an operation for a long time on the Lincoln Plaza Shopping Center, has also had two operations in Madison as well as in the Mayfair Mall and Brookfield Mall, and has been a very good operator. Obviously, should anything change, the special use could be revoked. The Park Commission has reviewed this proposal, has recommended approval, and we've received one objection to date based on traffic. If you have additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there any questions or comments from the council on this item? Okay, seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the audience on this item?
Sir, is there going to be any immoral behavior happening in that massage parlor? And how can you detect or check if there is or isn't?
The police department is very, their special investigation unit is designed to be able to detect that, which is what happened previously and they were shut down.
Okay. Will the, will the police officers go there on a quarterly basis, monthly basis?
We don't tell the police department how to do their job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the audience on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number two. And we will now move on to item E on your agenda, citizen participation. This is an opportunity for residents to address the council on matters of interest to them. We try to limit this to a 30-minute session and we ask that you keep your comments to about five minutes. Is there anybody who wishes to address the council under citizen participation this evening?
I do.
Come on up.
My name is Diane Brandt. I'm the executive director of the West Dallas, West Milwaukee Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to make you aware that we are holding our annual holiday charity benefit. It will be on Thursday, December 6th, at Missuenos this year. It's a big Christmas party. We do food, a raffle style on auction, different events to raise additional money. All of the proceeds go to help needy families in our community. We work directly with the Health Department and once the event is concluded, we take the money that's raised and we buy food and gift cards and we deliver them to the Health Department for distribution. Along with that, I wanted to make you aware of some of our business partners that are sponsoring the event. We have CHR Hansen, Village at Manor Park, Summit Credit Union, and Dawes Rigging and Crane. And hopefully we'll get a couple other sponsors for the event. I'm hoping that you can participate. And then also wanted to tell you about two other events that are being held by chamber members where the proceeds will also go for the Holiday Helper Program. One of them is tomorrow, which is a donation day at the Cousins on 92nd and Lincoln between the hours of 4:00 and 8:00 PM. 10% of the sales will go to this program. And then the second one is a fairly new business in West Dallas and a new chamber member, which is Orange Leaf Frozen Yogurt, and they are over on 109th and National. And their donation day will be December 11th, between 11:00 and 11:00. With them, they have a little coupon that you have to get and bring in in order for us to get the donation. You can go online to print this out and you can also go on our website for more information on the event or to register for the event. And our website is www.wawmchamber.com. In the past, we've raised about $5,000 with the event and then also the generous donations from employees from the City of West Dallas and the Village of West Milwaukee. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council under citizen participation?
Is this for public comment?
Yes.
Okay. Can I ask you a question? What is an alderman supposed to do?
It's not a, it's not a point for dialogue because it may violate open meetings laws on things we don't have posted, so it's only a chance for you to talk.
Okay. I would like to say on November 5th, Monday, November 5th, I contacted Rosa Lee Renneke and I asked her to call the police department because I see, I live on, off 116th Street and I, I would like the police department, because I witnessed two or three times, police officers coming out of the police department and cutting off people and not using their pointer or, and also speeding. And also I said to her, I would like to have Nathan Hale's school, the flash, the flashing light or the control signal to be 24 hours and because there's a lot of traffic there. And also I asked her to, at 124th and Lincoln, I asked her to maybe ask or try to ask the city engineer for a stop and go light there because during the morning hours, when trying to turn southbound on 124th Street from a Lincoln, it's, you can't do it. There's so much traffic there and I asked her to, to do my bidding with the agencies and she said, why don't I do it? And I could have done it, but what is an alderman supposed to do? Aren't they supposed to represent your concerns to the agencies and the City of West Dallas? And she, I don't know if she did, she didn't get back to me, so what should I do? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there any other comment under citizen participation this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we will close citizen participation and move on to item F on your agendas. Our standing committees will meet during recess. Those page numbers, I'm sorry, those room numbers are on page two on your agendas. We will now move on to item G, miscellaneous business, mayor's report. I want to start by saying congratulations to our outgoing police chief, Mike Youngluth. He is retired last Friday after 29 years serving the citizens. And I also would like to congratulate our new acting chief, Chuck Paget, who is in the audience this evening. I'm looking forward to working with him in this process coming up. I also want to remind everybody that December 1st, Christmas on the Avenue is coming up in the downtown. There is going to be 70th to 76th Street on Greenfield Avenue, there are going to be holiday activities, including ice sculpting, breakfast with Santa, lunch with Santa, hay rides, storytelling, craft fair, a bake sale, and much more. The Christmas tree lighting program will begin at 4:00 in the plaza at City Hall. There will be Christmas caroling and then the tree will actually be lit at 4:30. The West Dallas Community Christmas Parade will begin at 4:45 and that will go down Greenfield Avenue from 81st Street to 66th Street. And I do want to take a moment also to thank the sponsors of the parade and also the Christmas Parade Committee, who put in a lot of hours, including Alderman Weigel and other members, on putting this event together for our city. That concludes the mayor's report this evening. We'll move on to alderperson's comments. Are there any alderperson's comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I do understand that tonight, I mean, the budget that we will approve a specific item in regard money, at this point, is not in the budget because I do understand the issue has been in the making for about a year. But the fact stands that we dealt within our communities with various unions more or less to, to curb or try to come forward with not some concessions, which I believe they, they done so, so by going through negotiations. And I do praise certain levels of the unions within our communities. I, I do respect them because of that. But the fact stands that it's been an issue that I raised years ago within the fire department regard for assistant fire chiefs. So, I do understand it's been a study, it's been done for the, for the last year. So, now it came to a, to a point where the, the chief is asking, of course, going through within the police and fire commission, which they have the restrictions of the rules to sometime, once we approve some of the budgets, to do what they feel is right within their, their rights, within their jobs. But I felt that after we tried to curb some of the cost in high-level management, you know, now all of a sudden, from column assistant chiefs, they're gonna be called deputy chiefs. By column deputy chief, we talking about maybe in the future, the chief is gonna come forward to request additional funding to, to provide the additional raise of eight to ten thousand dollars more for each individual? Is that very appropriate really, when some of the unions, they get some concessions and get a small raise and there are people out there on the city streets, which they pay taxes, somebody even get a, not even a one percent raise, maybe they pay more for health insurance and on hard budget time, we've been got cut from the state, some budgetary reasons, so now we, we're facing with, the jobs are still there, but we're gonna change the title, but at the same time, they're getting more money for. I mean, to me, that's totally insane. Insane for somebody within this, this structure here. I mean, and within the hard times that we face within our community and we tell the unions, anybody else, try to watch their, what their demands are, is that very appropriate really? I mean, in all fairness, I mean, it's hard for me to stand here and make those statements, make those comments. Is it very appropriate? That's why I like to make open to the public what's really happens within our community, Mr. Mayor. You know, the money's not on the budget, but I hear maybe he could come forward in the future with, with an ordinance for the administration and finance to approve those fundings. I mean, at the same time, I believe the chief, he could get the money from anywhere. Once you approve a budget, he could get the money from any place he wants to cover the cost of additional payments for those four, four deputy chiefs, whatever they, he's gonna call up. So, his no concessions made at this point, even has been something in, or talks by some of the aldermen in regard make some changes. Nothing has been happening. So, now I might change the title from assistant chiefs, we call deputy chief, we're gonna praise them to give more money. Totally unfair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Probst?
I would like to announce that Alderman Weigel and I will be holding our next listening session on Thursday, December sixth, for residents of the second district at the West Dallas Library Constitution Room and that is also followed up on January third, same place, from seven to eight o'clock.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other alderperson's comments?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman May?
Couple announcements. Tomorrow is Stuff the Bus, ninety-nine WMYX will be doing the Stuff the Bus with Milwaukee County. Please stop by. I believe they start at six in the morning and they go quite a bit into, late into the morning, so please stop out, make a donation if you can. Also, yeah, that's at the Pick and Save at One Hundred Thirteenth and Greenfield. Thank you. Also, a reminder, there's a shop local initiative. If anyone's on Facebook, they've probably seen the advertisements. There's a shop local initiative going on and, and the mayor has a, what do you call it?
Proclamation.
Thank you. Proclamation to shop local. November twenty-fourth is officially the, the shop local initiative for the entire United States, so I just encourage everyone to get out and, and shop your local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other alderperson's comments?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Lysick?
I would ask the city clerk if there are any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda.
There are no changes.
I would then move the adoption of the agenda as printed.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by Alderman Renneke. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Lysick?
I move for approval of the minutes of the regular common council meeting of November fifth, two thousand twelve.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by Alderman Barzak. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item J on your agenda, item's not referred to committee. I'll ask for motion to place item three on file and refer four, five, and six to the city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Weigel. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item K, standing committee reports, administration and finance committee, Alderman Singstock.
Mayor Devine? This evening I'll be reporting out two items. Item number seven on the agenda this evening is Mayor Devine's recommended two thousand thirteen budget and following, anticipating that will be approved. Then the next item, number eight, will be our appropriation ordinance. An ordinance that enables the city to levy and, and optimistically, bills will be sent out the first week in December. The budgetary process is exhaustive. Mayor Devine sits down with all department heads, starting in, in, in the summer and attempts as best as you can with the department heads to scrutinize what happened in the past and prospectively what's gonna happen ensuing years. My opinion is that Mayor Devine's has a, this is a good budget. We spend numbers of hours in committee going through the budget. I commend Mr. Zaler for, for working with the department heads and working with the mayor and, and answering questions which number of councilmen's have raised and specifically our two new elected alderpersons, alderperson May and alderwoman Probst. The number of questions, I think it was brought to speed in terms of, of what the, what the budgetary process is all about. We had a public hearing last week and apparently the, the citizens are satisfied with, what our city is, is doing going forward. Having said that, Mayor Devine, number seven is the two thousand thirteen city of West Dallas's recommended budget of Mayor Devine and the committee unanimously recommend that, that this ordinance be approved as amended.
Second.
There is a motion with a second by Alderman Barzak. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Roke?
I would like to make a motion to amend the two thousand thirteen budget by eliminating item one hundred dash five zero zero one dash five one seven dash three zero dash four. What's that wrote? Well, that's the twenty-five thousand dollars for the promotional and branding consultant. I feel we could do it similar like we did with this environmental engineer that we all kind of put our thumbs down on and got the money out of a different pot and my understanding is there's money somewhere else rather than levied against the taxpayers for this position. That's my motion.
I'll say it.
Okay, there's a motion and there's a second by Alderman Vitale. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman May?
Just real quick, I, I know I saw it in the, the newspaper as well that this was a position or a hiring of a consultant. What I understand, this is, this is, we're not hiring anybody, we're not necessarily going out for a consultant. What the twenty-five thousand dollars is for is if there are some promotional initiatives we want to look at, look forward to doing in this coming year, that twenty-five thousand dollars would be allocated towards that, that amount. In committee, I had mentioned that I think what we need to do is we may, need to, before we start spending that money, we need to make sure we're taking a strategic look at what exactly we want, a values-driven session where we take a look again at what, what are our goals, what do we really want to get done with this money before we spend it? So, I'm comfortable with leaving it in, the budget. Again, I would, I'd like to stipulate if, I don't know if we can do that, that perhaps that money's not spent until we've got a good idea of what exactly we're branding and going after, but I'm, I'm comfortable with keeping the twenty-five thousand dollars in there.
Thank you, Alderman. Is there any other discussion? Okay, on the motion to amend, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Chapeleski?
Aye.
Cop? Lysick?
No.
May?
No.
Probst?
No.
Renneke?
No.
Wrote?
Aye.
Singstock?
Oh.
Vitale?
Aye.
Weigel?
No.
Three in favor, seven opposed.
Motion fails. Oh, we missed Alderman Barzak, I'm sorry.
Alderperson Barzak?
No.
Three in favor, seven opposed.
On the main motion then, Mayor Devine?
Okay, it's back before us. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Chapeleski?
Aye.
Lysick?
Aye.
May?
Aye.
Probst?
Aye.
Renneke?
Aye.
Wrote?
Aye.
Singstock?
Aye.
Vitale?
Aye.
Weigel?
Aye.
Barzak?
Aye.
Ten in favor and unopposed.
Motion carries.
Number eight, Mayor Devine, is our ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation and administration of the city of West Dallas for the calendar year two thousand thirteen. The committee by unanimous vote recommended passage as amended. I so move, Mayor Devine.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Vitale. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Chapeleski?
Aye.
Lysick?
Aye.
May?
Aye.
Probst?
Aye.
Renneke?
Aye.
Wrote?
Aye.
Barzak?
Aye.
Ten in favor and unopposed.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine, for all those in attendance this evening and those who are watching television, good news is that when you receive your tax bill, the, we don't have all the numbers coming in from the other levying bodies, but it does appear that's the county, the school district, sewage commission, the M A T C. And it looks like if there's gonna be any increase, it's gonna be miniscule, a decrease, maybe miniscule. Hopefully, it's gonna be our, our tax, the levy for the, for the, for the whole tax bill for the whole city will be down from last year, so kudos to all those different entities for closely scrutinizing the budget and this will be a, a good Christmas present for all our taxpayers in West Dallas. Thank you, Mayor Devine.
Thank you, Alderman.
That is all.
We will move on to the license and health committee. Alderman Chapeleski?
Mayor Devine, I will be reporting those out after recess meeting.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Lysick?
I would move that the council stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Alderman Singstock. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are in recess.[1774.98]